We've been downstairs in student recognition and as always folks, that's one of our favorite events. So if we'll please stand for the pledge. No public comments. Our student representative had to leave, so we will skip all the way down to number seven, the consent agenda. The chair will accept a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Reporter, the superintendent, library media program evaluation.
Good evening. We have our library program evaluation in front of you this evening. The last time we did a library evaluation of this program was in 2018, 19 school year. So we were ready. We have Ms. Bethany Villa Verde and Ms. Melanie Reiberg, who are going to help me introduce the program with you tonight. You can see the first item is our goals. We have 10 of them. And then we also included our framework for librarians. I'm going to have Bethany talk about our strengths and then Mel will wrap us up with any questions you might have at the end.
All right, so our strengths are that we are viewed by stakeholders as important to our programming. The goals and objectives are aligned with district strategic planning. We are compliant with state and federal guidelines. Our stakeholders believe students are benefiting from our program and the majority of stakeholders believe that the program is effective. Opportunities for growth, communication with parents, students and teachers on what the programs offer. And specifically on May 28th, we're going to be working with Mickey to create a campaign highlighting our programming and offerings to our school families that we plan on rolling out before school starts in August. So that's one step that we're going to take to achieve that goal. The second piece is gathering student voice on a regular basis to improve programming. So librarians meet on a regular basis through professional development and we are going to look at giving students surveys and interviews if they're at the age where it's not appropriate for them to write, where they can use their voice just to determine like what type of books are we giving them and other opportunities for learning.
I love recent changes that was given to me because I'm a recent change in the library. So I came in the year after this survey was done, so this was new information for me too. So just selecting quality titles for the library collection that act as mirrors for students who previously have been underrepresented in literature. And then funding now is consistent K-12. Across the district, it's $21 per student earmarked for library budgets. And the biggest shift that we talked about was in library media centers. We are centered around technology and require more than just the books organizing and that kind of thing. So which is where the the funding comes in handy too.
If you can see down below, we broke down each question and how each of the participants scored. And those, they were a rating out of 4.0. We had about 112 staff participated in the survey, 20 parents and 386 students. So is from the survey that we did in 18, we actually had more people participate in our survey than last time when we did our program evaluation. At the end, you can see the overall program rating for each, the perceptions of students, parents and staff. At the end, 3.7 for staff out of 4.0, students 3.1, and then parents was 3.4. So we believe that the big piece will be making sure that students and staff and and families know what is going on and what we do have available from our libraries. And that's where Mickey's going to come in and help us promote. Do you have any questions?
I don't know if I heard it, but and I do think you said it, but I'm just old and I can't hear anything. How are you going to get the parents more involved? That was one of your communications to parents and I noticed on one of the scores. Oh, that was funding, but communication, oh, here it is. And that's by the students, communication to parents and staff. Can you guys tell me how you plan to actually do that?
So this was kind of kismet, I guess, because I had just worked with Mickey on overall in the district. Part of our strategic plan is communication. And so while I know that we're working on something to streamline communication, we're also going to make sure that in the libraries, we're all doing the same thing. Because throughout elementary and middle school and high school, we all sort of do our own thing to communicate to families. But we do have a fluid community, especially at STEAM. We have kids from all over the district, so we want to make sure that we're we're consistent with what we do and then how we tell others what we're doing. And yeah, you said you saw the student one. Some of the student responses were like, I don't even know what a media center is. And we're like, it's your library. So yeah, so just letting them know and kind of maybe even just using that verbiage with kids so that they know. Where we used to have, when this survey was done before, we actually had people that were technology. That was their whole job. We had a para and now that's all our stuff too. So we do that. We're first line of defense, especially at one-to-one schools with if kids have problems with their iPads or if something's not connecting, our maps testing are going on. So we have to make sure that we're kind of the buffer between technology so that they work on the big problems. And yeah, but kids, I mean, the kids know when they bring us their stuff, but the parents don't always know that that's what we do, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, on the survey, was that sent out to like school-wide, school-wide parents, school-wide students? Is that about average of the of what you get back? Or?
Well, this is our first program evaluation that I've been involved with. I looked back and we did have more than we had last time in 2018. Students, we did it within the school day, so we capture them. So we do, and that's not kindergarten, first, second, third. These are the older kids that could understand what we're asking from them. Parents, we really would like more. I mean, 20 is not really, but also again, they might not understand the impact or why we're asking. Cause we do send out through Mickey through our email and social media, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Well, I want to make sure that you guys got to us and I'd like it to be more often than every 20 years.
Yes, we have a schedule now.
Yes, we have a schedule now.
And COVID is not going to happen.
Yes, so that will work. So yes. It's not, yeah, there you go. Any other questions? Alrighty, thank you so much for coming in and explaining the program to us. And as always, keep doing the great work.
Thank you so much. They are wonderful to work with. The librarians are a gem for sure.
Alrighty.
Oh, yeah.
FY25 preliminary budget.
Yeah, she should have on your computer and in front of you a copy of the first draft of the FY25 preliminary budget. Want to remind you that it's still April and we'll bring you an updated copy in May. And we'll visit it at both meetings in June. I won't need approval on this budget until the last meeting in June. This is a year that we've talked about for the last two or three years, this FY25. We've talked about the end of the federal stimulus dollars, the SRR funds coming. And this is where we're starting to see that. This budget as compared to last year reflects a decrease in revenue of 4.1 million in funds one and two. 2.7 of that is SRR funds that we had last year that we won't have next year. And then 1.4 of that is from our state basic formula dollars. That loss, as we've talked many times, is due to the decrease in student enrollment. We are down 364 students from FY20, which we have been using as our formula since COVID began that year. So this is, this is all the stuff we were talking about. And you can also see that we're, you'll look, we're down about just over 400,000 in fund four. Those are, you know, other federal and state equipment grants. The majority of that being the school safety grant that we got this year. I did hear that at the state finance meeting I've been at the past three days, there's not going to be any more safety grants or maybe opportunities for some other grants as we go into next year. We'll just take a look at that. And to not be all doom and gloom, there is in the state formula at least, an opportunity. There'll be an opportunity next year if our enrollment does not decrease too much, that we could estimate our attendance next year. I've never, never done that. We've never done that here. But the state has assured us, right Karen, they're going to work with us on it. And if we did, the advantage to doing that is we would be able to take advantage of the lower ratio for free reduced lunch students. That's part of our weighted number that we look at along with ELL and special education students. And so those parameters lowered, so we would be able to count more students on the formula. But that is something we will start looking at in October, which is when we get our first payment of the year. And we will monitor that with the help of the state. And we actually don't have to make a decision until May of next year on whether we're going to do that. So they will help us make the best decision for us. So that would be one opportunity. Glimmer of hope that we would have to gain more, more state funding for next year. So take a look at it. You'll see as you go through those, if there's zeros in the, in certain columns where there was money in last year, if the last three years to compare, that is most definitely a grant. And we are making changes as we speak. We sat down today with some of my bigger budgets and started line editing some stuff on expenses. So that'll be an ongoing process right up to the very last meeting. So if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call, email, text, or let me know and I will get you the answers to the best of my ability and as soon as I can.
I'm just kind of curious. And it's going to be very difficult for you to answer this, Bob, or even try to. Based on what you're seeing, and if you get some of those other grants, do you know how many millions we might have to look at maybe stepping back on within the district?
Well, I mean, you know, Kim has been working a lot lately with her federal, with the stimulus dollar she had and evaluating programs, seeing what we can keep, what one-time stuff needed to go and some stuff was really good and we're going to maintain that. And it's hard to say when they tell you there's an opportunity for grants, they don't even tell you what the grants are. We don't even know what areas they're going to be in yet. So it's just something we're going to keep our eye on. We do get monthly memos. And you know, and stuff like that, our DSE is really just a roll-through for the federal government. So they're getting us the information just as soon as they possibly get it to.
Is the new strategic plan in this too? Some of the monies that we'll have to do for the strategic plan?
So some of the items would not be any kind of significant cost. However, we still have to go through, you know, the five-year roll-in to the strategic plan.
Right.
And in year one, honestly, as far as big ticket items, I did send an email to everybody that had the action steps, I believe, yesterday. So you guys have those, but we have not met to prioritize which year, as far as year one, two, three, four, five in that regard. So I really don't see a huge cost, maybe some at January, but we'll have a pretty good idea. I think most of it will happen in year two if there's going to be some sort of expense. And honestly, we're going to look at ways to be efficient there as well with staff. And if we make some decisions, personnel is always a huge expense. And those areas we're going to look at, you look at 364 kids difference. And if we have to roll back, staff members will start to do that. In the past, we've always looked at retirements and looked at those as options and opportunities. We've even had some conversations about trying to streamline some of the administrative personnel and costs that we have even for this next year. But once again, as far as strategic plan and any kind of major cost or change, I don't really see that. One of the bigger items would be changing the elementary buildings. But we feel like a majority of, and especially with the enrollment, there may not be a cause for a huge increase in staff. Some would argue that it's not as efficient when you break it into neighborhood schools. Like with Mill Creek, when you have everybody together, you can divide them. Dr. Jones would know this better than anybody as a principal there. You can divide a larger number by a number of staff and it makes it easy. And when you have a building, the irony is they never come out to, if you want 25 or 30 in a class, you always have 34 or 27 or whatever that pushes you barely over, which may cause you to be inefficient as far as your student teacher ratio.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the preliminary budget? As always, folks, remember we did this a few years ago where we started early in April so that people could look at it and ask any questions. So please get with them if you have any questions between now and in the end of June. Employee benefits renewal?
Yes, we recently met to review our employee benefits. And here you'll see a few changes and I'll outline those for you as we go through this memo. The first one, you'll notice that there is a, due to statutory requirements, all HSA plans will be changing from the $3,000 deductible to the $3,200 deductible. And that is just mandatory. It's part of regulations. You'll also notice that that the rates are coming in at $795.42, which is about a $20.56 increase per employee per month. And that's an overall increase of $116,186. You'll also see just some review of history there for you, just for some historical data. In 2020, there was that 19.6 increase, 21 and 22, 0% change with no plan chains, plan changes. Last year, a 16% increase that they negotiated down to 11.8 with those prescription drug list changes. This year, we had a 13.5% increase initially and we were able to get that to 2.6% with the addition of a new base plan. It's called the Spira Blue Select Plus Plan that has a Spira Care piece to it. And that Spira Care really came about last year. I think they kind of talked about it. There was only maybe one that was close to us, one or two centers. That was all the way in Shawnee Mission, nothing very close to us. Now they're kind of popping up everywhere. We've got one in Lee Summit, got one right over here, I think Overland Park. So they're, they're very comprehensive centers. We've heard a lot of great things about them. They've got labs and x-rays in, in, in the site. So it's when you go there, you can have your blood drawn and have your x-rays done right there on site. They have behavioral consultants, so they really are a benefit. There are no changes to our dental voluntary vision, board paid life, voluntary life, long-term disability or EAP program this year. Supplemental voluntary benefits will be managed by American Fidelity and that open enrollment should be coming, information should be coming out very soon to staff so they can sign up. And that, those dates are May 13th through the 22nd. So mark your calendars. Again, information will be coming out shortly for staff to sign up on that. And this is the insurance proposal that we bring for you this evening.
Dave, I'll let you start.
So has there been any thought in, just because of what I do, looking like the city went to a different agent, but from CBIZ to Brown and Brown? Did that help the situation? Changing agents, and the reason I say that is I get risks all the time to look at that the current agent hasn't put it out to market for 10 years. I come in half the price. It's not health insurance. It's Karen's printing operation when she had it type operation. But have we ever thought about seeing or working with a different agent who might be a little bit more hungry and maybe get better rates if possible?
We could. I mean, we bid this insurance out. I'm thinking whatever, three years. We do go out to bids for like United Healthcare and other entities. So we have utilized CBIZ as the agent to do that. And predominantly, I would say that they work with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City. And I mean, Belton has been a long time, I think the second longest in the metro as far as relationship with a health insurance provider. And not to say that that's not okay, but so we have stuck with Blue Cross Blue Shield KC for a very, very long time in that regard. So, so could we go out? Could we get a different broker? Could we bid that service out? Could we have a different healthcare insurance? We can. Of course, one of the drawbacks to that is you typically have different providers, different doctors. Teachers don't like that. Staff members don't like when they have to change their doctors when you switch to different healthcare. But that could save the district money in doing that.
Just think that could be an option because I get what you're saying. The changing the doctors thing is, that's a big deal to everybody, I think. And if they can't go to the same doctors, but at the same time, you know, if you have a young teacher, 25 years old, making $43,000 and they have to pay, if they take the higher plan, $200 a month, that's just, that's a hit for them. And it's, it's it's just an option, just, you know, can we look at using a different broker? Can they come up with more plans that might be cheaper? They could be cheaper and be worse, for all we know. You just never know what you're going to get, but is there an option to do that kind of situation?
And we have looked at being self-insured in the past. We've looked at a consortium with Lou Springs and Smithville and a few other districts to try to go out. They did not offer the coverage that we have with our employees. We could have saved some money, but then again, what we would have had would be more what I would call catastrophic type insurance, $5, $10,000 deductibles. So obviously not the three, $3,200 deductibles that we currently have. There is a cost for that type of coverage that we have. So what we have in these HMOs and these PPOs is what I would consider very robust. I would put these coverages up against anybody's health plan that you were to see. Those HMOs, very few dollars out of pocket, but they are costly. And honestly, HMOs are somewhat dinosaurs, really don't have them. And so that is one of the things that we have kept and that has been, they're still pretty popular. The percentage of people, I know you guys can see that as far as HMO is concerned, is still a decent number of our staff that want to be. And I can guarantee if we switch out of Blue Cross, we will not have those. Dr. Poizel is going to tell us what those percentages are here just momentarily as I give a little bit of a commercial break here and continue to talk with not anything to say other than I'm talking.
These numbers are a little bigger, so I do not need my glasses on to read those. In our Blue Select Plus Qualified High Deductible Plan, our base plan this last year, 28% of our employees were enrolled in that. In our Purple HMO Plan, another 32% of our employees were in that. And then the, I guess, the very base plan held 36% PCB. Help me on that real quick.
Our high deductible, Blue Cross, the Blue Plan. And so the I-35 in essence was the coverage of that base plan. So you can see that our free plan had 38%, but our, one of our HMOs had 32%. So a pretty good chunk of staff are in there. We could raise pulling points to cut back and save. We could possibly have someone come in. I'm trying to think of who else is out there besides United off the top of my head. There's a few other consortiums out there that have insurance, not opposed to looking at them. And it's not like we have some kind of personal relationship with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Jim's been our broker for many years with CBIZ. He was here long before I got here and we've continued to work with him because they've done a good job.
You know, I'll just say from a personal experience, one of the consortiums we looked with, looked at, my wife is a retired teacher. Her school district is with that. They've changed major carriers five consecutive years. And their high deductible instead of 3,200, you know, deductible is 5,000, so.
And I get what you guys are saying. I totally understand it. I was just, is there an option to just take a look at it? It doesn't mean you have to change. It doesn't mean, it just, is there something that you can look at and go, oh, you know what? This might be a little better.
Yeah, I would doubt that for this year since we're going to start signups in about two weeks, three weeks. But yeah, we could look at that and as they say, make people sharpen their pencils.
But when you talk about higher deductibles, what are the premiums? As far as what the staff pays or, you know, compared to the?
We still have a free plan.
Right, but.
Which a lot, her premium is lower. Yes, it is.
Yeah, that was.
She'd have a free.
Of course, then that saves us money and then the teachers don't get as much in the retirement because there's not as much money goes to it.
Yeah.
Well, and I'm even thinking the, the people here who have families on the insurance as well as just the employee.
And at the point of retirement, she was not offered a free plan.
Well, we have, you know, you have to educate the employees. A lot of them, oh, I'm on my husband's insurance. And are you kidding me? That's going into your retirement. You need your insurance here too. So, so there's all of those kinds of things to talk about.
A lot of factors that go into it, yeah.
Yeah, if they have $479 covered at District X and we're covering 793, that 793 counts toward their retirement versus that 479 at the other. So it is behooves them that we do have a higher coverage there. And I'm not saying that's good because it would be nice that our cost was lower and therefore we could use that money towards salaries. Because we only have one pot, as you guys know from looking at the preliminary budget there, there's not extra. And so it either has to go toward that insurance and or towards salaries.
And I'm just throwing that out there just for the people listening, so.
For information.
I'll make a motion that we approve the employee benefits as presented.
Second.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second to employ, to accept the employee benefits program as presented. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Legislative update.
Yes, Senate Bill 727 obviously was a disappointment last Wednesday that was passed. It has went to the governor's office and I believe there is some information being shared around. I would encourage our staff, our community, everyone to communicate is obviously we have a concern about the Senate Bill 727, let alone their ability to fund it. But a lot of the pieces to it, there's really not a benefit to our school district. And we also see that in a lot of others. There have been comments made by some of our local legislators that it helped rural districts. I have contacted multiple rural districts south of us such as Drexel, Midway, Adrian, who've also contacted Ballard Sherwood, other schools that are smaller and none of them were in favor of this either. And so it does increase teachers' salaries to 40,000. We're already paying a first-year teacher 43,000 right now currently. And I think the next time it would change is be the 28, 29 school year after that 40. And I would suspect a lot of people are going to be way past that when we get near the end of this decade, that there may be any of the other kind of adjustment. That's been the biggest push by the legislatures, legislators is that there would be an increase toward that. The other side of the coin obviously is they're increasing the amount of money that can go toward vouchers. But when they come to approve budget year after year, if they want to roll it back, they can roll back our transportation funding from roughly 360 million back, I believe, to about 118 million. Does that sound right? And so there could be a, put money over here for teachers, but then take money over here for transportation. Once again, we only have one pot of money, so therefore we have to provide transportation. And therefore that would hurt us in giving salaries to teachers by doing such a maneuver. That can happen. And we've also heard of proration factors in the past when it comes to the state formula, wish they could prorate us back. They've been at 100%, but they could write, you know, prorate back 95 and 90, so on. And so there's ways for them to pull money back out of this budget as we see some flat funding projections at the state level for the next two years. We just don't think that they can fund this bill. And so we're going to vehemently encourage our governor to veto this bill as it is barely passed. Had to have 82 votes. It got 82 votes. That was it.
Yes. We did pass a letter on. I did have it at the table. I think everyone signed it and put it back. And it's in the packet there for radar for all of those. So.
President Miller, I know that we have someone that knows a vast amount of knowledge about MSTA in the audience. And the possibility of our staff members being aware that they could communicate to our governor as well. But we don't want to put anybody on the spot.
Correct.
And I have a phone number to call him. You have to be patient to get through, but you can call and leave a message.
Have we, have we heard any communication from our state? I did hear there was going to be a joint letter signed by MSTA, MSA, MASP, several different groups.
I have some information for you, but I don't know if it includes that.
That's up to our president here.
You are on the board. Let's go.
No, I don't, I can share with you. I mean, I don't want to read it, but Dr. Underwood, we talked earlier. And it's just some of the, the MSTA did support pieces of it, but did oppose the voucher system and the expanded Boone County section, but did support the increase of salary for teachers to 40,000. Obviously, MSTA covers the whole state. So here, we're fortunate that we're already above that measure. So, but I do have any information if anyone's interested in that. So, so pieces, but not the whole.
Of some kind of roundtable group. And I thought that the roundtable was going to produce some kind of letter for membership to send to the governor. But I've just heard that through.
I don't know. I just received this, the action report today. So, but I did not say anything about that specifically.
Okay, alrighty.
I even color coded it for you later, Dr. Underwood.
Alrighty, any question about the legislative update? Fox, we all knew that one was going to pass one of these days. So there's nobody at this table that didn't realize that one of these days they were going to get it. And I kind of figured it would be this year. I was hoping that the chaos in Jefferson City would save us. But no, so there we go. We will plan accordingly is all we can do. New business employment, certified personnel.
Yes, we have a few new hires for you this evening. So the administration asked the board to approve, approve the employment of the following certified personnel as presented.
Motion to approve the employment of certified personnel as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the employment of certified personnel as presented. Any discussion? Seeing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passes employment, non-certified personnel.
Yes, the administration asked the board to approve the employment of the following non-certified personnel as presented.
Motion to approve the employment of non-certified personnel as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the employment of non-certified personnel as presented. Any discussion? Seeing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passes horizontal advancements.
Yes, one horizontal advancement for you this evening. The administration asked the board to approve the horizontal advancement of Taylor Grab Miller.
Motion to approve the horizontal advancement as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the horizontal advancements as presented. Any discussion? Seeing that, all in favor, say aye. All opposed. Passes some miscellaneous. As stated earlier, the opposition letter to Senate Bill 727 is here. I think most everybody did, did sign it. There is one other one in here and is it on its own or is it part of this one? I think it's part of the resolution.
And I would just add, and this is a great piece, like Ms. Phil Verdi and them that are here, they can get on this agenda. And even our staff could use this letter if they so chose to not have to read great one. Because this is a public document. I mean, any of our constituents or our staff could see this if they choose to. I mean, if they want to, that's fine. If they don't, then that's also fine. But this is also accessible. And I may reach out to Ms. Hendricks as well, so you guys can share with your teams that this is there available. Not required by any means, but it's an option if they're interested in sending their thoughts and their opinions to the governor.
So the, we did do a, one of the things that I, MSBA was saying that they wanted to do it as each individual board member. And I was on a meeting last week and I asked for a resolution. And somewhere, it is here. And I thought it was on this. Thank you.
The resolution is attached in the agenda.
I'm going through your file, so I wanted to make sure it was there. Anyway, so there's the, there's the resolution and the chair would like to make the motion that the Board of Education as well as our regular letters for each individual member. But we do a resolution as the Belton School District Board of Education to go against and ask him to veto Senate Bill 727.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution against 727. Any discussion? Seeing that, all in favor, say aye. All opposed. Passes radar. We're going to have all this here for you, for you to send to MSBA. When you get back.
I sure will.
Thank you. The next one on the agenda is the letter of support, which is what I asked for to be put on the agenda. So for MSBA, the president-elect for this coming year, who would be president, Patty Quisenberry of Ozark, lost her local election. And by rules, she cannot, of course, serve on as a president of the MSBA. So what they are, because of timing and because it has to be done by the June Summer Summit, I think they're still calling it. They are going to bring it to the floor for any member of the Board of Directors or an REC Chair for one year to be nominated. And I would like to nominate Shelley Mantell. And so what this is, is this is a letter saying that this Board of Education supports her being on the nomination, to be nominated. So how that works is she has to get five letters from different Boards of Educations, two of which from a different region. So she is down by Ava, I believe, down in your old neck of the woods, sir. She's in Mountain.
Mountain View.
Mountain View. I knew it was a mountain. So she's in Mountain View. And so she is a good person and, and I'm glad that she has decided to run. So I would like to make the motion, like I think I already said that, but to, for us to support Shelley for president-elect of MSBA.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the letter of support for Shelley Mantell. Any discussion? Yes.
I was just curious, can you tell me a little bit more about, I mean, is she a principal? Is she a superintendent?
No, she's a Board of Director. She's a school board member just like us. She's been on her local board for probably 20 years.
I was on the nominating committee last year and actually got the pleasure of interviewing her. And she has a lot of good, strong values that support public education at every level. And she comes from a, and she will tell you upfront, she comes from a small, poor county. So they have to be a little more creative there, but she's always looking out for what's best for not just her school district, but all of those around her as well. So she was my vote last year for the position.
Yes, she's, she's a good person. And it was either going to be her or I, and I'm thankful that it is her. So there we go. Any other discussion? Seeing that, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. That passes. And radar, I'll get you her email address as well, if you don't already have it. For you to send this letter to her.
Okay, yeah, I do not have her email address.
Okay, I'll send it to you. Committee updates. Start with MSBA. And that will go with Mrs. Cummings. Anything from you?
We traveled to Jeff City a couple of weeks ago and visited with some strong nos that voted yes, or excuse me, hard nos that voted yes on 727.
That's kind of funny.
But not shocking, I guess. I was a little let down, but that's okay. We, we heard, but as you can see, that that didn't really matter a whole lot now because it's, it is what it is. Jerry Miller went with me. Maybe he had a different take on the feeling we had when we left here on Tuesday.
No, I'd have bet money on last Thursday that the two people that voted yes were on hard no because I had reached out to both of them when we were in Jefferson City. And I had reached out to one of them at 7:30 morning while I'm drinking coffee at the cabin. And that was a hard no at 7:30. We can talk about offline about what happened after that, but that's, that was not a good day.
Yeah, so.
But the event was.
The event was very nice and, and getting to speak to, or getting to listen to our new, what is Esslinger? I always forget. She's the.
Commissioner of the Education.
Missouri. I had to think for a minute, lost me. But I, I think she, if she's honest and truthful and, and every, all of her attitudes and the things she has to say, I think they've made a good selection for that position. And she has a history of being pro-public schools in her legislative offices. So that's kind of, I kind of don't have a little pep story today. I'm still kind of reeling from.
That's fine.
I shouldn't take it so personally, but I do.
We did, MSBA did go and look at the Weston Crown Center, the location of the annual conference for next year. So people will be staying at the Weston or the Sheraton. And it's all right there. It looks like it's going to be a very nice event center. I think it'll be a little easier to get around than, than it was in Bartle Hall. Although I don't think they call it Bartle Hall anymore, but that's why I called it. Do they still call it Bartle Hall? So anyways, so that, and now it's there for the next three years. And then MSBA will have to decide what they're going to do down the road on that. So alrighty, City of Belton night, that's a new one that we started. I don't know that anybody has attended any Belton, City of Belton meetings.
Or an attendees in here.
Not me.
Both of us. There was, there was four of us.
Yeah.
Jerry, there's actually four of us there with Norm.
We had a quorum at the, yeah, well, one of them had a different job.
Do we need to report that?
Anyways, anything going on with the city that the, that the school district needs to be aware of?
They did approve another tax abatement on a home. On a home. So.
Three fifty-three.
Oh, the three fifty-three for the old Main Street area.
Yeah. And then the, nothing that really affects the school district, but the parks on Drydenland really put a neat program together to make that a nice park out there with the event center and things like that. And that's presented. Oh, but it does, sorry, it does affect the school district a little bit because we're going to put a learning center out there and things like that. And a lot of discussion was about the school district and kids using that out there.
And that it would be easy to walk to from many of our buildings in that area.
Very cool. Alrighty. So we have a new person from the Belton Educational Foundation. This is the Mary Cummings Show right now.
Well, actually, I'm just going to read this since it's my first time and Karen set the bar kind of hard. So I'm high, I'm a little nervous, but okay. Last night, the foundation awarded $21,100 in scholarships to students in VHS. And some of them were from private people who are, who gave their scholarships. Some of them actually appeared and gave the scholarships last night. And Sonya wanted me to also say that we're grateful for employee giving payroll deduction program, our donors and our business partnerships who make all this possible. On May 14th, we will be awarding spring building and teacher grants. So inviting all the board to attend that and administrators if they can. Teachers have asked for over $33,000 worth of materials. And they haven't made all the final decisions yet, but they will by then. It will begin at 8:45 or to nine o'clock and it will finish up with Dr. Underwood's show. Oh, that's called the Chamber Luncheon State of the Schools Meeting. I'm sorry. Okay, and then You Matter Belton Day is May 17th. And that's jointly through You Matter Belton, Belton Cares and the foundation. We always need volunteers. You can go to signup genius if you need the link or the link, I can give it to you. Doesn't take 20, 30 minutes and you're out of there. You Matter Belton and the foundation are giving gifts to all staff for Teacher Appreciation Week, a plastic pencil pouch, post-it notes, coupons to several local businesses who have been so generous to donate and a $5 gift card. The alumni committee is inviting VHS alumni to stop by our tent at the Cinco de Mayo on May 5th. That's a Sunday. And we will also be doing something with Carrie Nation Days, which is May 31st, June 1st. That hasn't been finalized yet. And then further on down the road, get it as to save the date on your calendar. The gala this year is September 7th and it's at a new venue called The Venue. The, the times are a little different. It'll have a different feel. And there'll be live entertainment this year and Teresa Deaton Band will be our live entertainment. Most of you probably have heard of her or actually heard her. So that's all I have from the foundation.
Where's the venue at?
That's 135th, around between Knoll and Row, I think, right in there.
Okay. More to follow on that. So you moved right on into Belton Cares so we can.
Okay, and I know that's, but she's not here tonight, so I'll talk a little bit about Belton Cares. Let me pull that up so I don't forget anything.
She wanted to make sure that we got the green ribbons out to everybody here tonight.
Right.
Assured her that we will do that.
And I'll get to that here. And yeah, we got it. So the things that Belton Cares is doing, well, save the date. Once again, this is even further or not quite as far out as the gala, August 10th is the Troy Shaw Golf Tournament. After grad plans are going well, we could always use volunteers for that night. We'll have a lot of things going on then. Then that leads me to our mental health. It, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And so we're going to put some things together for the month. Not just school wide, it's going to be community wide. Alan Edmonds is going to run something weekly in the paper about the importance of mental health and taking care of yourself. We are going to encourage everyone in the district to wear green on Friday. Mickey's on that. And that's where these come in. These are the green ribbons that you can wear that honor the month. We're going to have posters and stuff to go on doors of businesses and classrooms and, and the schools. We're going to do a chalk the walk on Main Street during the month. We're going to encourage, and we're really going to hit Main Street hard because we've got different things that go on to, to have them participate. We'll have some social media things coming out. We're going to schedule it. We have scheduled. I'm sorry, that's, I scheduled it today. We're going to have a QPR training. Some of you probably don't know what that is, but QPR just means to question, persuade and, and refer. And it, it's just a way to be trained so you know how to talk to someone who might be in crisis. And it might be, it might be save a life. It might interrupt that crisis because you can refer them to help. So we're going to offer that on May 23rd at the Curriculum Center from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. And so let's see if I've covered everything else with that. Oh, and we're going to have the, the. And um, so let's see if I've covered everything else with that. Oh, and we're gonna have the, the the ribbons to hand out at the Walk for Health on the fourth. And um, at the Fentanyl Vigil, or uh, Candlelight Vigil for Fentanyl, that's May ninth at Peace Park at six PM. So anyone wants to attend that. Um, so that's where we're at with all the efforts we have out for mental health. We have, we've created and we're getting it more solid, a, a partnership with MoDOT. And one of the things that I just wanted to mention was for Drivers Ed this year, we're gonna bring in some hands-on activities and opportunities. But we're going to, and I've been working with the Drivers Ed teachers and Kelly Vaughn and, and so uh, Walmart does um, a no-zone truck and they bring a semi out and they park it. And then kids can get in there and sit in the truck. And when they get there, there's a car sitting right by the side of the truck. But when they get in the truck, they can't see it anymore. So it, it gets a, it's through uh, MoDOT and it's very um, informational for the Drivers Ed kids. Some of the other things we're looking at is doing a mock um, traffic stop, so the kids know what to do if they would get pulled over by the police. Um, so that, and I mean, we've had that happen to a couple of our drivers over the years, but I know. And so that's, that's what made me think maybe we should have a, a mock, we uh, uh, well, service learning and, and the police department wrote a grant a few years ago and we have adult-sized pedal cars. They're huge. And so we're gonna bring those over and set up a course for the kids to drive regular. And then we have three levels of goggles, one just over the legal limit, one well over the legal limit. And as my seniors said the last year and I had them, you should be dead because you cannot see anything. So we'll have that and some other things. And we're gonna try to do them at Southwick Stadium parking lot because we can not only have the Drivers Ed kids come there when they drive, but all of our athletes who are doing their weights and conditioning and everything for the summer, that would be available for, available for them. The seatbelt convincer is also on our list from the Missouri Highway Patrol and um, oh, the rollover simulator that wrote, simulates a rollover crash. So anyway, that's the things with um, and you guys all know we did a um, a mock car crash a couple of weeks ago, so. Um, so I think that's it, but I'll just end on the note with, please, if you want to after graduation, it's at half an hour earlier this year graduation is. So you'll have more time to rest in between graduation and after grad. So thank you.
Alrighty, thank you for all of that. That was quite an report. Um, the, the, the next one is the board meeting day change. Um, this is what happens when Mr. Miller doesn't bring his phone at the last meeting and didn't check the, the date right. So the chair would like to ask the, to, to make a motion to move the uh, board meeting that was recently moved to June eleventh to June sixth. So that would be the uh, motion. That'd be the date change.
That's also the Dare Golf Tournament Day.
Yes, I realize that we're gonna, some of us would be doing the Dare Golf Tournament and then coming to a board meeting. So, but that is what it is.
You'd run overtime or not?
Motion to approve the board meeting from June eleventh to June sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to change the date of the June eleventh board meeting to June sixth. Any discussion? Seeing then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That way I won't have to zoom in while I'm at the beach and I don't want to see what Dr. Jones, oh, well, Dr. Jones won't be here, so it wouldn't matter.
You're just worried somebody will pick your nose.
Yeah. Anyways, some miscellaneous dates. May second is the Belton Middle School Dance, six to seven thirty. May second is also the uh, Belton High School Choir Pops Concert at seven PM. May third is no school for staff collaboration. May third is service recognition at two PM. May fourth is Bandarama at Belton High School. May fourth is also the Merle Clark Scholarship Golf Tournament at Eagles Landing, eight AM. May fourth is also the Cass Community Health Foundation Five K for Health at Southwick Stadium. May ninth is the Belton High School Improv Show at seven PM. May tenth is graduation at uh, is it Cable Diver now? Yeah, Cable Diver Arena. Uh, May sixteenth is the board, next board meeting at seven PM. May sixteenth is also the Spring Play at six thirty. And May sixteenth is the High School Theater, uh, the Rules of Comedy at seven PM. Are there any dates that the chair missed? Seeing then, the chair will accept a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? Seeing then, Jim?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
President Miller, I would.